Carrie?
I'm here.
Uh, do you just say your name and, uh, the title of your conference.
Carrie Sorelino-Marlborough.
Thank you. Joe?
Joe Buddy Hebron.
Keith?
Keith Monks-Hebron.
Eric?
Eric.
Uh, Kirsten? Kirsten? Okay, Mike?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Dr. Benzema? Uh, she's on, Dr. Benzema. Uh, Mary?
Mary Koczewski Marlborough.
Thank you. Sue? All right, and Heather?
Heather Silver Hebron.
Great, and I am Mike Morris, and I represent, uh, Hebron. If you could all stand for the pleasure of the evening, Mr. Mary. My name is Jim Collin, and I am a citizen of America, who is a republic, for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. Uh, I would like to ask the board, if there are any objections to going slightly out of order to, uh, tonight's agenda, I'd like to push items six, seven, and five, uh, forward and, uh, address them prior to item three, which is public comment. If there is an objection, I'll make a motion to do so and put it to a vote. If there's no objection, I'll carry on. Eric? No, not you, I'm sorry. Any, any objections? All right, here are no objections, uh, I'll push forward the, uh, board chair report. "There's no adequate way to describe disgust and disappointment and anger I felt when informed that what appears to be a news was discovered in our high school boys' locker room on Friday. This behavior and the doggies associated will not be tolerated, period. I've lived in the region eight districts for twenty years, and this behavior is in no way, shape, or form representative of our communities. I'm confident the board, our community leaders, and our community at large share this view and had a similar reaction to that news. This happened. Law enforcement was contacted immediately, and as reported, significant resources have been brought to parent investigation. Our superintendent communicated everything known as soon as practical to keep our parents, our students, our staff, and our community informed. Our entire administration has been and will continue to do everything necessary to support our students, our faculty, and our staff. They continue to assess the needs, and I'm confident that they will adjust and apply resources as appropriate going forward. The board stands ready to assist in those efforts. The most appropriate steps next are to support those who need supporting, continue to cooperate with law enforcement to find out who did this and hold them accountable, and get on with the uniting goal of educating kids rather than letting the goal of this kind of contentious act, division, fear, and intimidation succeed. Mr. McNamara continues to be the appropriate point of contact and the node to communicate information, next steps, actions, resources, and activities in the region school, the Region A School District response."
So, good evening. As the board knows, I sent a message to the entire school community regarding the situation from last week. I am not able to make any further public comment on the matter at this time due to the ongoing police investigation. It is important, however, to reiterate the word, that words or actions spreading racism, discrimination, or hateful ideologies will not be tolerated in our schools. RAM is committed to creating and maintaining an educational environment that is physically, emotionally, and intellectually safe and free from forms of harassment and discrimination. The district's focus at this time is to ensure that the students and staff who have been affected by last week's event are provided with a safe sit, a safe space at school and with all the supports we can offer. We also have begun connecting with community resources to work on developing a long-term plan that addresses this issue through education, training, and community conversations. Our priority continues to be the well-being of the entire RAM community. This concludes my report.
Uh, let's start with the, uh, first student. Uh, Hebron.
We all know about the incident that occurred on Friday, and I feel as though that it is a terrible situation, but it is also an opportunity to open up some conversation. I understand that the thoughts and feelings that people in this community may have right now may feel extremely heavy. As a student here at RAM, I too feel this burden. However, I want to take this opportunity to offer my perspective in hopes that it may start a conversation. RAM is a great school; there is no denying that. However, I have heard from other students, especially those of color, that they sometimes feel like they are on the outside looking in. What I mean by that is just that they have expressed that they feel excluded at times within the RAM community. I, myself, can understand and relate to these perspectives at times. Therefore, I feel that amongst the community of students here at RAM, as well as in many other schools, there is a lack of awareness as to how we, as students, as well as a community, contribute to these exclusions. This is not to blame anyone, but to highlight that, as a community, I think it may be helpful to open the possibility of such ignorance and to open more conversations and educational discussions about diversity and inclusion. It truly is a complex and layered issue, and one that will most definitely take time and effort to address, but I feel as though being open and honest with one another despite point, different points of view may be helpful.
Thank you, girl.
Chair Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure where she spoke from, but it was difficult to understand her, and I, I, I think I did, I really tried to understand her, but if there's anything that can be done on that and make things clear, that would be helpful because everybody has important things to say, and we certainly want to listen.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, uh, why don't you come down here and make your statement? It's a little closer to the mic, so that I can listen to it. This is, uh, this is, uh, this is, uh...
All right, so, good evening. Uh, obviously, and this is gonna go throughout the night, you've already heard this already, but I, my heart goes out to all of those, uh, who were, uh, affected by the incidents that occurred, uh, on Friday. It's, like, uh, everybody said, it's not tolerable here at RAM, and I know for a fact that RAM is also a school that is able to get through this together as a community because regardless of what happened on Friday, I know that there are many pe, many, the, the staff members and, uh, everybody at RAM knows how to come together to help, uh, you know, get people through, uh, these times, so I just wanted to, uh, keep that out there because I, I've been, I've been going to RAM for four years now, and I know that RAM still continues to be, um, a pleasure to be in, and I, and I genuinely love this community, so, and I believe that this is a community that is suc, that is suc, is successfully gonna be able to, uh, get through this, so, thank you.
All right, if we could, going forward, we're gonna just try to do the best we can and focus on the end. If you have a comment, you probably are gonna need to speak up a little bit so we can make sure we can pick it up for the hybrid meetings. Fortunately, we have. Okay, thank you for indulging me in that, uh, order change. Item three is public comment. If you bear with me for a moment. Hebron Andover Marlborough, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Recedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. This time, I would like to open up to anyone present, step forward if they'd like to make a public comment. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lori Palzolier. I'm heartbroken, like many of you, about this recent incident at RAM High School. I'm heartbroken and scared. I'm scared for the students of color at RAM. I'm scared for any student who identifies from a marginalized group. Finally, I am terrified for all of them. An affront to the human rights of one group is an affront to us all. However, I'm sad to say that, although, I am heartbroken and I am not shocked. While this can certainly happen in any school, I am not surprised it happened at RAM. Over the past couple of years, I have noticed a lack of discourse regarding the issues surrounding the George Floyd murder and the Black Lives Matter movement. I compare what's being said in the classrooms and in the schools to my work at Manchester High School. The discrepancy was tremendous. While where I worked was centered our professional dialogue on race and discussed the issue of race daily with our students, this was not happening at RAM. While I realize that RAM has not the diversity that Manchester does, it does not give us the permission to largely ignore these issues. While we do not have the same population, we still live in the same world with the same problems. Our students need to hear a clear message about what oppression is and how people of color face this every day, and not just in pre-Civil War era, it is happening right now. Clearly, we have students of color who are facing this oppression right now at RAM High School. What worries me is that there is a built-in culture that is tolerant of hate. I am worried this lack of discussion of white privilege, of oppression, is giving those who are racist or may subscribe to racist ideologies tacit permission to be more vocal. Certainly, the selling of Confederate flags at the Hebron Harvest Fair gives us another piece of evidence where there is tolerance for hate. Although this is not in our jurisdiction, we need to be aware of this and not turn a blind eye. I am worried this latest act may be just the beginning. How long will we turn a blind eye to what is around us? We need to face this head-on. By this, I do not mean a one-time assembly where we discuss this and then students return to their class. They will not remember what was said, and it will not be meaningful. By this, I mean we need to integrate discussion of race into the fabric, the culture of the school. It needs to be integrated into the curriculum. A class devoted to human rights and diversity and understanding may be as a graduation requirement. Regardless of how we integrate this education, it needs to be thorough, meaningful, and be a part of the mission of the school. I know that if our response is not thorough, if it is not integrated into the culture, we'll be back here again, talking about the next incident in a month, a year, two years, but we'll be back, and I am terrified of that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Jolly. I'm a resident of Hebron. I've lived here for over thirty-five years. Both of my children graduated from RAM. I'm also vice president of the Coalition on Diversity and Equity, or CODE. On behalf of CODE, I want to express how appalled and deeply saddened we all were when we heard what happened. We feel for RAM students, especially students of color and their parents. A hanging noose is a symbol of hate and intimidation. The history it represents is horrific and tragic. It is no place anywhere, but the fact that it was in our school is heartbreaking and a wake-up call for action. The issue is not gonna be solved just by calling in the state police, arresting the offending individual or individuals, and expelling them. While discipline is appropriate, the student's behavior is a symptom of a larger problem, and the underlying reasons for this action need to be uncovered and addressed. CODE is committed to working with RAM leadership to identify and move forward on the many recommendations we have offered on creating a culture that is welcoming and respectful to all, that increases the number of teachers of color, that celebrates diversity, that teaches a holistic and comprehensive history of all people, including those whose lives and contributions may have been ignored, and that deals firmly and emphatically with any incidents of hate or discrimination. We also invited a parent or any community member to learn more about CODE and to become involved in our work.
Good evening. My name is Amy DiMaggio, and I am a resident of Hebron as well, and, uh, I want to thank you for your service. I know that you guys are putting in a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate the thought you're putting into this. I want to say that, um, as a member of, as president of CODE, the Coalition on Diversity and Equity, that, as Donna had said, we are outraged by this incident. My thoughts, um, are about, um, the board and how the board's, um, conversations and deliberations about certain topics send a message to the greater community, so, um, as a member, I was a member of the board for eight years. I want to urge everybody to, uh, on the board, to educate yourselves about the increased risk, mental health issues, and suicide for kids that are marginalized on a daily basis. And I'm saying this because it's a reality that every school has kids who are marginalized, and I want to just bring forward that when somebody wears, wears a shirt, or, or wears a ci, a certain, um, symbol, just bring support to somebody, that that shouldn't, that shouldn't, um, be thought of as a racist act or, or one of a political statement. Like, these kids are marginalized. They need to feel supported and cared about, and I, I just encourage the board to, in fact, learn about how best to, um, handle these kind of situations, because the conversations, they trickle down. These, the conversation that you're having in executive session tonight, that's all over the place. Like, it's not just in these, in this area. The kids are hearing this, and it's hurtful, and it's, continues to oppress them. Um, I'd like to model, I'd like you all to please consider modeling that this learning is a lifelong endeavor. Bring in specialists on how to deal with this. We can't do business as usual because that's not working for us. We have to bring in people who this is their job to, um, bring, bring, uh, to talk about race on a daily basis. Bring in people who are gonna be able to educate our administrators. But board people, please learn first so that you can carry the, you can carry the message loud and clear, lead the, lead the troop, so that everybody is understanding what's expected of this district. It starts up here. Um, this weekend alone, I've heard of several kid parents, from several parents, who say their kids, uh, are receiving racial, race, are experiencing racism on a daily basis in this school. I want to, um, I just, I, so I want to reiterate that it's really important for, for the board to understand that this is not a one-time deal, like, this has gotta be a long-term solution. As Donna mentioned, that it's, we've got the police involved, but, and obviously, uh, discipline is appropriate, but we've gotta look at the bigger culture, the bigger problem, and bring in people who can help us as a community, um, solve this, work on this, and as somebody else mentioned, to integrate it into daily conversation that's gotta be happening. And...
Amy, can you and other, in addition, submit your comments, because, um, most of us at home and lots of folks that don't even know, we're having trouble when we really want to hear said, so we will listen, and we are listening. Can you and Mrs. Jolly and others also submit written comments if, if possible?
I didn't, I didn't write anything, so I'm not sure that that's possible, but...
We'll, we'll get a transcript of it, and what I think maybe going forward, what we'll ask is for people to use this microphone over here, only because it's a little closer to the microphones to pick up things on the back, but thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else present for public comment? Please, sir. I could ask you to step all the way over here just because it helps to pick up the hybrid microphone.
Oh, no problem. Trick was getting in here. How's it going?
You can just say your name and where you're from.
Sure. I've been a whole, I was a walkin'. Excuse me. Evening, everybody. My name is Rodney Alexander, Jr., First Vice President of the Wyndham Willimantic Branch of the N double A C P. And I'm here today, tonight, to speak on the situation of this event, or should I say horrific situation that took place with the noose hanging in the locker room. This is 2022. When's it gonna stop? When's it gonna stop? Saw some of that remarks online about, "Shit's a noose. Doesn't mean anything." Well, if a person of color, especially black, means a lot. It's one of the most symbolic discriminatory tools for racism in America. I'm gonna tell you why it's important, 'cause once it's hung, it's just a matter of time before it's used. In June of eighty-eight, Stratford, Connecticut, it's a Corski aircraft. Had a couple of white guys throw a rope around my neck. Tried to choke me out and said, "This is how we used to get rid of your kind back in the days." Some article said rope's not important, noose's not important. That's why I'm here tonight. We have to figure out a way to stop this. Racism is old, and it surfaced again, and we have to figure out a way to bury it for good. Now, as First Vice President of Wyndham Willimantic Branch, I am more than willing to sit and talk with any staff, president, superintendent, principals of any schools out here, to come up with some sort of educational plan, diversity plans, so we can put a stop to this. I am very easy to find. Our website, you can check me out there. My personal cell is (660) 634-6121. We need everybody's help to put a stop to this. This particular branch of the N double A C P, the Wyndham Willimantic Branch, is one of the most diversified branches in the state of Connecticut. We work very hard in a lot of schools, because we cover from Coventry through Thompson, and we're well-known out here, but it's obvious we're not known enough here. So I'm here tonight to let you know that the Wyndham Willimantic Branch is willing to do whatever it takes to put a stop to this. We have to put a stop to this, 'cause if it starts here, believe me, it's spreading, and it's gonna keep spreading, and I need your help, your help, and your help to stop it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Lee Spotts. I am a faculty member in the NEAC School of Education and Associate Vice Provost at UConn. I've spent my twenty-eight career in higher education and public schools. I believe in strong public school systems. I cannot agree more with what our colleague from Wyndham and Willimantic just said. What is needed right now is an immediate, active response to this incident. We need community members, like our colleagues in the N double A C P and CODE. We need the school board leading the way, along with the superintendent, to right this wrong. A noose is a weapon. Simply, it is a weapon. If a gun had been found, what would the response be of the board? We should view this as a weapon in your response. A noose is also a symbol, as we have been reminded by many speakers here tonight. It is a symbol of racism. It is a symbol of hatred. It is a symbol of intolerance. It is a symbol meant to remind people that they are belittled to the point of death, that their lives do not matter. And that is not something I am willing to tolerate in my town and in my school district. This is also something that has to be acted upon. The letter is a right first step. The condemnation that we heard at the beginning of the meeting tonight is the right first step. The people here sharing their stories is the right first step, but it is only the first step. Without a clearly communicated action plan, we will fall victim to continuing evidence of systemic racism in our town and in our schools. This calls for a curricular reform. It calls for training and development of our teachers and our students. I am here to offer my support in any way that I can to identify colleagues at the NEAC School of Education. Many of whom are experts in just these areas, in school climate, in diversity and inclusivity, and the education of everyone involved, town people too, in these concepts. That is the only way we will drive out hatred in our town and in our schools, is to educate each other, to learn from those who have been there ahead of us, to listen and amplify the voices of our colleagues of color, and to promise that we will act in ways that will ensure that we do better and we provide an actual safe climate for our students to go to school. They cannot learn. They cannot learn if they are not safe. They cannot learn if they are not made to believe that they are members that are valued and protected in our community. And this is not one or two or three teachers having Black Lives Matter signs in their classroom, or support for LGBTQ students, who we also saw witness to violence over the weekend. This is me asking why every teacher doesn't have that in their classroom, why every space in this school district isn't viewed as a safe space. Now, again, I pledge my support to all of you. I know that this is something that probably many of you didn't think you were gonna do when you ran for the school board, was try to address issues that are truly systemic to our society, but we have to start somewhere, and it seems like we're starting here.
Good evening. My name is Erin Gussier. I am a longtime Hebron resident. I'm actually a RAM graduate from nineteen ninety-six, and, uh, my child, my child is a senior this year, and I have two other children go through RAM. I'm here to tell you that, um, racism is a lo, is alive and well at RAM and has been forever. Um, when I graduated in nineteen ninety-six, um, there may be a few of you here, um, that were at RAM at the time, um, but I can tell you that I was the girl that was yelling at the kids wearing the Confederate flag shirts and getting sent to the principal's office for that, um, so not much has changed. I, I moved away, um, when I was looking for a place to raise my family. I said, "I'm gonna come back to Hebron," because I thought that the town had progressed and that we had great school systems, but I'm here to tell you that there's a big problem, and this shows it. Um, I don't wanna be here all night talking, because everyone, everybody said here is absolutely perfect. I agree with everything that everybody said. I appreciate all of you for being here. Um, I appreciate all of you for being here, um, but, you know, this is really something that is bigger than the school, it's a community issue. When your kids are going home and you're making racist jokes, it's not funny. Um, you know, when you're making jokes about safe space, um, on Facebook, it's not funny. Um, so as a community, we really need to come together and realize that we are setting the example for our students, for our children, for our community, and, and when we walk around, like, it's okay to drop the N-word, like, it's a joke, it's not a joke, so we all need to act appropriately, and I think this is a huge wake-up call, um, and I really, really, I, I just appreciate everybody for being here and for speaking up. I know there are a lot of people that are afraid to speak up. There are a lot of people that didn't wanna come tonight because they didn't know how they would be viewed enough. We can't live in fear anymore. The people that did this are in the wrong. We are not in the wrong. We are the group that's in the right, and we all need to take a stand. This is not political, this is human rights. So I just, again, that's, that's really what I wanted, wanted to speak about tonight, and I do thank everybody for taking the time to be here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cole Matthews. I apologize, I don't want to voice. I am from Hebron, and, um, I didn't prepare anything to say, but I do just wanna throw something out to the group. Previously, I tried to have the board elect me to declare racism a public health crisis in Hebron, and that was turned down. What they chose to do... What they chose to do was form a committee, the committee that, the committee didn't actually accomplish anything. So I would like to echo what people have already said, we just need to take action. Don't form committees because they don't get anywhere. This work is done. You don't need to reinvent the wheel. Use your community partners who have already gone out and done it. And I come from a rough career field, so I apologize for the quote I'm about to use. But we all need to shut our mouths and open our ears. You're all white. Most of us are white. Listen to the people who live this. I'm Jewish. When I was a kid, pennies were thrown at me in the hallway. Obnoxious, but I was never hurt. Talk to the people who live this every day. Listen to the people who live this every day, and take it for granted.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Rager, and I am a member of NAACP. I would just like to say, I was born in the fifties and from out Birmingham, I was born. So this is nothing new to me. And only thing I see that has changed is that the hoods have come off, you know? And I just want y'all to know, we are standing here in a learning institution. This is a taught thing, you know? It just don't continue. It has to be taught, generation after generation after generation. So we need to stop now. You know, we need to stop it now. So like I said, I was born in the fifties, and I'm still witness to this. And the only thing that they used to cover up now is out in plain day. The other thing I would like to, I would like to see is do that.
Tiffany Tealy, six twenty-six Gillett Street. And I'm just speaking tonight in my capacity as a concerned citizen. And I certainly don't wanna take away from many of the wonderful comments that I echo, which I fully support and agree with here today. And the only thing I wanna say is I wanna emphasize the point that this doesn't end inside this school. This is a larger community issue. And I think that this is something we can't continue to sweep under the rug and say it's one incident, problem solved. It's very clear there's an undercurrent throughout our communities, especially in eastern Connecticut. And so I think we have a lot of work to do to live up to the ideal of being an inclusive, welcoming community. And I think that organizations like Code are a helpful resource, and we should work with them more frequently to realize that ideal. Thank you.
Anyone else present would like to give a public comment? At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to, are there people online that would like to present a public comment? Eric, I'm gonna rely on you to let me know. If you're online and you'd like to present public comment, either raise your digital hand or just go ahead and speak out. None? Okay, I'm sorry, there's one. What's his name? Kathryn Stevenson, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. I'm sorry I could not be present in person. Is my voice clear?
Yes, you're fine.
Okay, I'm not lying, yes, you are clear. Thank you. Okay. I, last week's events proved that Ram's environment and culture does need to change. I also echo, support, and agreement with previous people's statements, one hundred percent. My presentation today has a slightly different bent. I feel that the climate needs to be safe, not only for students, but also for all teachers, faculty, and staff. My concerns today are twofold. One is about drugs, intimidation, and on the bus, from students toward other students and toward the bus drivers. This continues to be a problem, and it has been brought up to principals and never to superintendent, but to principals with essentially no effect. My other concern is I am saddened and very concerned to hear the resignation of an excellent teacher who is currently in an administrative role in the STEM and business area, Ms. Jackie Weatherall. She has experienced verbal threats, been called vulgar names, and experienced physical intimidation, including shoving by students. Apparently, it took five days for superintendent and principals to address the problem. And apparently, the students received one day of in-school suspension. That is not a zero tolerance policy for maintaining safety. What's the comment? In the letter, Ram is committed to creating and maintaining an educational environment that is physically, emotionally, and intellectually safe, and thus free from forms of harassment and discrimination. Teachers need to feel safe. She's resigning. She's a huge, huge loss to the school. Something, something has to be done about this. As well as the drugs and the persistent intimidation and threats from kids on the bus, to the bus drivers and to other students.
Is there anyone else online for public comment? No. Okay, just one more time inside. Did anybody come in? Assuming none. Look, I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to be here. I think some folks came from farther away than others, and I know sometimes people took a lot of time out of their own personal lives to come here and share, and I appreciate the fact that you did that. The board appreciates the fact that you did that. Thank you very much. So we'll pick up with the rest of the board agenda. Item four is an addition and deletion of agenda items. This time, I'll open up to the board. Are there any items that could be proposed for addition or deletion from the agenda? Hearing none, we're gonna assume that there are none. We've already covered items five, six, and seven. This brings us to item eight, the consent agenda. The approval of the minutes from October seventeenth, which is enclosure eight point one. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October seventeenth. Eric, is there a second? Heather, thank you. Do a voice vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, that carries unanimously.
I, I.
Thank you. Okay, item eight point two, the resignations of Todd Helly, enclosure eight point two A, Jacqueline Weatherall, enclosure eight point two B, and Nadia De Roy, enclosure eight point two C. Is there a motion to accept the resignations of Todd Helly, Jacqueline Weatherall, and Nadia De Roy? Joe, is there a second? Heather, thank you. Do again, do a voice vote. Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any discussion?
I would like to hear some discussions since I brought it up.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I think that was, um, out of order at that point.
If you could speak up, that would be, sorry. Yeah, this is basically about the board discussions. Is there any board members that have any discussion? Depending on the motion in front of us. Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna move on to the vote. I'll do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Yes, Mike, I apologize, but you have to meet past for prejudice, so I'm staying.
I'm sorry, hold on one second, Dr. Brenzgill. I can't hear. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry, it's difficult to hear you tonight. It's not our normal venue, so we're making do with sound, which I appreciate the people that put this together for us, but I know it's not, it's not our normal situation. Retirement notification, item eight point three, N. Robert Schweitzer, enclosure eight point three A. Which, is there a motion to accept the upcoming retirement of Nancy Robert Schweitzer? All right, Mike, is there a second? Here, you got it, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that carries. At this point, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There is a little bit of difficulty communicating tonight. I apologize. The sound is a little off. For eight point one, I, my vote could be yes.
Okay.
It's abstaining for eight point two.
I understand. We've tried, I've got any questions for that. Thank you. Okay, item nine, Eastcon presentation.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Eric Portulus, who is the new executive director at Eastcon. Eastcon is our local RESC, our regional educational service center that provides districts like Region Eight, as well as many other districts across the eastern part of Connecticut with support and services that are very beneficial to us. And Eric had indicated, when I met with him earlier in the summer, that he was interested in coming to our district and talking a little bit about what's going on in Eastcon. So Eric, thank you so much for being here, and please step up to the mic.
Thank you. No. Raise it up a little bit?
Maybe just speak up as best you can.
Okay, that's, that's right. Thank you for the invite tonight. I am Eric Portulus, the new executive director at Eastcon. Truly is a privilege to come here before you as well. I'm in a debt of gratitude to Region Eight. As I spent a good part of my career here as a school psychologist and as a director of people's services. And Ram has a very special place in my heart, and I'm excited to be back in the region and have the opportunity to address you tonight. And acknowledge the work that you guys have before, and obviously tonight's comments and the events that you're facing with are very challenging. And I know there's a strong community support in the region that we want to be here to be able to support that in any way that we can from Eastcon's perspective as well. I asked to come out and speak with the boards as part of my plan of coming back into working at Eastcon and really seeing what opportunities we have to present a little bit of what we are. The last few years have been a challenging time for Eastcon as far as an agency. As many of us have felt the pressures of the pandemic and the impact that it's had. And so I walked into a situation with some financial challenges as well that we're working very heavily and mightily on rectifying. But the big piece of it is really to help rebuild our relationships and restore Eastcon in terms of its place within the region. That might not be noticeable to some of our communities, and it's more noticeable to some of our other communities that we may not have been able to be as responsive as we would like to be. And so part of my commitment in coming back to Eastcon is to be in that position where we really do cherish the opportunity to collaborate and build the relationships. My own career, I spent a lot of time doing that, both regionally and across the state. I've worked for Eastcon before and as well at a RESC down in the greater New Haven area pieces. And that work really has been focusing on looking for those collaborations and efficiencies that RESC is designed to do. And how do we present and bring forth services and supports that our district need? And particularly, when we think about northeastern Connecticut, the challenges of resources, the challenges of those networks. It is, there's a lot more pressure in our region. So we're really committed to being here and being a partner to all of our districts. So I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you both for the opportunities that were given to me before as a member of the faculty here at Ram, but also just to reintroduce us to you as a board and any opportunities that you might see for us to collaborate with you and services that we might be able to provide to the region. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric, so much. I've appreciated working with Eric, getting to know him, and then certainly report your continued partnership. So item number ten for the agenda this evening is we put together the administrative team for the middle school and high school, put together a presentation that we would like to do on our twenty-one, twenty-two assessment data. So I'm gonna introduce, introduce Dr. Shurisi from the high school and Dr. Brenzgill from the, sorry, I got that. Dr. Shurisi from the middle school, Dr. Brenzgill from the high school. We're gonna talk a little bit about Chris and Bethany as well.
Apologize to those online. Just bear with us, we're just trying to bring up the presentation here.
So I'm Bethany Lawrence, and one of the assistant principals at the high school. So we're just gonna go over our assessment data for last year. We'll start off with the high school. So this is pretty much how we test our students every year. So you can see the breakdown by high school. We do grade nine, ten, eleven. Eleven does the SAT in March as well, and the NGSS. We have AP exams that some students take, a good portion of our students take, but not all. And then at the middle school.
Middle school, we have, everybody knows, basically grades three on through grade eight. They take the SMART evals, assessments in math and language arts for grade seven, eight in the spring. The next generation science assessment is also given only to grade five, grade eight, and grade eleven students. That is also in the spring. And then we do give the grade eight PSATs in October. Just to go a little further, one of the things that we are, will do with the presentation is we also have referenced our DIRD, which is our district reference group, based on the Connecticut State Department of Education. They certainly categorize, have some similar socioeconomic, similar looks about themselves, so to speak. And on the slides, on the slide that you have in front of you, you see that Andover, Barkhamstead, et cetera, through District Nineteen are members of DIRD-C, which we are also a member of. I will also tell you that some of the data you will see for the, at least for the middle school later on does not include a couple of these counts because they do not have grade seven or eight. Also, some of, if you have less than twenty members in a class, they do not report the data on the slide. So just to give you that sort of preemptive look.
So same applies for the high school. We have, you know, far less districts in our DIRD that we're able to compare to than are actually in our DIRD. To go to the next slide. So we tested our ninth grade students in March or April last year. And you can see from the scores that they, you know, performed well above the state average both years. So over half of our students reached both benchmarks. Then you look at the state average, it was about twenty-two percent hit both. So we're well above that. You can also see there's a slight decrease from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and last year. Next slide. So PSAT ten, similar results for us for our tenth graders. We marched last year, performed well above the state average. More than half of our students meeting both benchmarks, which is well above the state average. We did have that slight decline from ten nineteen to ten sixteen as our average score over that year, which I think to some degree we attribute to. which I think to some degree we attribute to COVID and just part of that process for kids to come back from that. Next slide. Um, we also had the SAT last year, so we did that on the SAT School Day, on March twenty-second, which most schools in the country do that day. So you can see our scores compared to the state average, in red there, so we're well above that. So doing very well. Next slide. Um, this is the DIRD data for the SAT for last year. So if you look at all the, you know, sort of neighboring districts that fall into the same category with us, we are, you know, third out of all those districts. So that's, you know, feel pretty confident and feel good about that. And, you know, consistently score high in our DIRD for the SAT. Next. So this is data for the SAT over the past three years. Um, you can see since the pandemic, we've had a reduction in scores since twenty-twenty, but that is actually a statewide trend. So if you look at the gray, you can see the same decline for each area. EBRW is evidence-based reading and writing, sorry, I didn't mention that before. Um, so, we used to call reading and writing before. So as you can see, you know, slight decline, something that we're going to be addressing. Next slide. Um, so the NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards, which tests all of our eleventh graders on science curriculum, that's a fairly good test that came out in two thousand nineteen. Um, we scored nine out of seventeen. Out of, we're sort of focusing on the percentage of our students who are proficient. So, but if you look at the numbers, you can see we're really close to the ones above us, so we don't have a far way to go and move up significantly. And our science department has worked diligently to improve their science comprehension, they're rewriting curriculum, designing new performance-based assessments, utilizing practice tests in class. Thank you. Um, so these are the AP tests that we administered last year, we did twenty-four offerings. Um, we had a lot of students take these AP exams, it's pretty diverse offerings as well, and we continue to add more each year. Next. So for the AP data, we had three hundred and eighty-five tests taken, so we had many students who took more than one AP exam. Um, the number of students who scored three, four, or five on those tests were two hundred and eighty-two, which gives us a, you know, success rate of ninety percent. So ninety percent of our kids passed the AP exam, if you want to call it that, they get credit for it. And then eighty-seven point five percent of our tests administered were higher than the Connecticut average scores on those AP exams. Do you have any questions about the high school data? Before we move on to the middle school?
So as I said before, we give the, every year, we've been giving the PSAT-A right around the end of October, beginning of November. Um, we have four years of data, and as you can see, we did take a slight decline going into COVID. Coming out, we're hoping we're starting to see build back up a little bit. The bottom there, the benchmark score is a benchmark for PSAT-A, PSAT-nine. So a three ninety on the evidence-based writer, the ALAs, we call it, is three ninety for that standard, and four thirty is the math score. So one of the things we look at is us compared to the state. Um, our scores are pretty much well above the state average. And there are different districts that use the PSAT-A. If you ask me a name like Clinton, they just give us an overall number around four thousand, I think, took the test across the state. We're still waiting scores for this year. Um, looking at over the years, we go back and switching to Smarter Balance, we look at our Smarter Balance scores over the years, the state percentages are in the parentheses, and you'll see that we are higher than the state average. But at the same time, we also have noticed, you'll notice there, when you go to two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, the different cohorts, eighteen, nineteen, and then twenty-twenty-two, there is one set of scores that are missing. Uh, that was deemed non-comparable by the state, the state does not report it. And that was two thousand nineteen, twenty, or if you have twenty-twenty-one. Yeah. So we are, um, we're looking, we're looking to start post-COVID as using sort of this as a benchmark to move up, obviously. And you'll see that is reflected in where we fall in our DIRD, with the DIRD-C. So math seven and math eight, when you look at the numbers, you'll see, you'll even notice here that there's a difference in the number of towns in each one, and that's because based on the number of students a lot of times within the district. Uh, just to give you an example, we, we were curious, like Salem has thirty kids, Columbia has around twenty-eight or thirty kids as well. Small numbers that are being reported, but we fall pretty much right in the middle in each one. And the same true, is true for the English Language Arts, we are right in the middle. Um, again, if you go a few percentage points up, you, you know, you put us more towards the top, the top half, but still, it's something that we're working on and using this data to inform us going forward. The Next Generation Science, we actually, our science, eighth grade science, we hit a little more towards the top. Sixth overall in this score. And it is, again, we are looking at, we actually have been working on professional development for our science teachers over the last couple of years on the NGSS standards, and we are in the process of looking at curriculum as well. So the big question we always ask at both the middle and high schools, you know, what do you do with all these numbers? We know that numbers don't define all students, and we also know that a lot of times we look at these scores and we say, okay, what are some of the underlying issues that we, we challenge us as educators to help our students move forward? So, here's what we do with it. I mean, we use it for goals, both school, district, strategic plans. We try to tailor our goals to help us using the data to inform us. We identify any critical areas that are skills that students need to work on. The biggest ones we found over the years seem to be pretty much the same, critical thinking and problem solving, algebraic reasoning, words and content, English conventions, I won't go on and on, but those just seem to be big, heavy ones that we can tailor and succeed. And part of this is also working with our sending counts, which every year we do have a conversation with our math and English colleagues and the sixth grade teachers, they'll come up and talk to us here at Ram. They talk with coordinators and math and English. We do provide individual feedback to students with the data about their strengths and areas that they could improve on. The PSAT-A is a classic one, we actually spend a few days, our guidance staff, our school counseling staff will work with the teams, actually the teams work in their advisories and have the students look at their scores and learn how they can access online sort of a self-help tutorial through Khan Academy to work on the areas, their areas of weakness. And this is available to all students who sign up for the college board. We also use the data ourselves, both middle and high, to identify students, areas that may need additional support, interventions, do they need some type of boost in math or science or any of the subject areas? And we also use it to plan for a professional development. This year's topic has been inquiry instruction and project-based learning, which gets at a lot of the critical thinking, problem-solving skills. In addition to, we also look at the social, emotional resilience, executive function, all these other categories to support our work. Questions?
Could I say something real quick, because I, one of the things that we talked about when we put this presentation together, was we felt it would be important to provide the DIRD comparisons. But I also want to stress, and I think Bethany mentioned this very quickly, which is, I, I, I really would ask board members to not focus too much around rankings within the DIRD. The, the, the DIRDs are created by the state, right, there are district reference groups, that's how we are compared to other, so instead of saying, we're being compared to a, you know, Greenwich Public Schools or a Fairfield Public Schools, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense. So it's, I did ask them, and we talked a lot about this, but I just, if we do this presentation from one year to the next, you're going to see movement in the, you're going to see movement. And I just, I, I would ask that people try not to get hung up too much on where we are, because Bethany said it very well, a percent, a few percentage points can move you up and down. And, and it's just, we wanted to provide it for as a reference for board members, but I just, I, I hopefully it doesn't become a center of focus for, for when we talk about our data. Thank you.
Um, me as the chairman.
Go ahead.
Okay, and, and Dr. Shurisi and those who have known me for years are going to know that I actually want a CS score as high or better than our DIRD grade runs. So, um, it's fine we're DIRD-C, and it's fine we're using this, I certainly understand this, but, but we really are talking about a global, globally competitive marketplace and workplace. And I know that our superintendent and our administration endorses that well, but I think, as we know, we're getting a global achievement gap, we're not just comparing ourselves to Massachusetts or Connecticut. And I, I know you know that, but it just sounds like it should be said again.
Any other questions from the board? Actually, I have two, so, and I, I don't need an answer now, but I would, I don't need a formal answer, but I'd sure love some sort of an informal to sort of gauge where we, I, I think it's great that they give us kind of state comparisons, but where do we land in the country, like where do we land nationally? Like what, you know, again, I don't need a presentation, and I, but I'd sure love to anecdotally know kind of where, where, how does the state in general, and then how does Ram sort of fit into that picture? Just give us a ballpark.
I think, I looked it up, and the last available data for high school was in two thousand nineteen, but it included, but I can look up and see where we work the score compared to in seventy-two.
Okay, I, I, like I said, it's not, I don't want to, it's not, it's just something that, I think the only other thing I would say is look at, and everything else that I do, since I'm generally not the smartest person in the room, I usually try to look around and figure out who is and ask them questions, and as I look at all of these, and I, I'm sensitive to, to the superintendent's comments about how the DIRDs are put together and how they form and move and change. Um, but I, I have to say, it, it, we, we remiss, we didn't notice that Salem and specifically District Eighteen sit pretty, pretty far at the top of these, and I think it would be not in the worst expenditure of time to ask somebody that works at Salem in District Eighteen if there's any best practices or anything that, you know, we could employ, so. All right, that's all I had. Okay, thank you.
And Mike, to our chairman, for that of your question, so Dr. Brenzgill does this better, better than I do, but there's actually fascinating details of student achievement data. And what it shows is the top ten percent of US students score as well as almost anyone in the world, with the exception of Shanghai China. And it really, it, there, there are brackets, like intervals of, um, to ten, then to twenty, thirty, and economically disadvantaged students. Um, it, it, it's very, very fascinating, and you could get lost down that rabbit hole or whatever, but I think when our strategic planning committee convenes, that that is something worth looking at, because I, I do think we want global benchmarking. I mean, I know, um, I have a daughter who just graduated college, and she is globally competitive, really because of Ram, for, for, for sure. So I, I think that's, that's important, and that was a good question.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for putting that together, appreciate that. All right, at this point, we're at, I, agenda item eleven, old business. Uh, the eleven point one is the discussion, possible action regarding school construction, HVAC grant application, enclosure eleven point one. Colin, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I'll, I'll do my best to give the context to this. So, um, as the board members know, we are working to apply for, um, grant funding for a reimbursement for HVAC work that has already been completed. Um, we've discussed this previously, there's, there's grant money that was made available, most of the grant money that was made available for new projects. Essentially, what we've discovered is that those have to be a little shovel-ready, where you've gone through a very specific, arduous process, and essentially, you're ready to, you've got the funding, and then you, you can apply for the grant. Uh, it just wasn't really feasible for us to, to, to go after that type of grant money, but there was a small amount of money that was allocated for reimbursement. And we've had two projects that were completed, HVAC projects that were completed, within the window of time that was permissible to go for the reimbursement grant. So, the, the, the challenge with this grant application that, that Eva and Mike Schleifer and I discovered when we started working on it, is that it's essentially, uh, the grant application process is set up like the school construction process, where, um, where, um, very specific resolutions have to be made, very specific building committees need to be made, very specific plans need to be provided and developed, all that stuff that, that basically is, gets you to be shovel-ready, if that makes sense. And so, um, a lot of that stuff wasn't done for our process of the HVAC projects that we completed because of the fact that we just followed our standard budgeting process. However, one of the things that is required as a part of the grant application specifically for the, or for the reimbursement as well, is the fact that the, um, the district adopts resolutions authorizing the superintendent of schools to apply to DAS for the grant reimbursement. So even though we've already done the projects, the projects have been completed, we still need to go through this because we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and this enables us to apply for the grant. I will say, and I shared this at a recent finance subcommittee meeting, that I, I don't know if, you know, this obviously doesn't guarantee that we're going to get the grant money, but it just at least, it checks one of the boxes that we're required to check. So that's the reason that there's two sep, there's, these resolutions are coming to you today. The two resolutions have to be teased out, and there have to be two specific resolutions and two motions for two separate resolutions, because that's the way you have to do it. You have to have a different resolution for each project.
So, at this point, while we go through, we'll work through the motions, and once the motions are made, um, ideally, we can go through any discussion or questions that might arise from either of both, or none. Uh, any questions about that? All right, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Region Eight Board of Education accept the resolution authorizing the superintendent of schools to apply to the commissioner of the, of administrative services and to accept or reject a grant for the reimbursement of the costs associated with the installation of the completed air conditioning project that included the weight room, media center, and two health classrooms at Ram High School. Mike, that. Okay. Thank you, Heather. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, discussion, will have a voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that will carry. Second motion. Motion that the Region Eight Board of Education accept the resolution authorizing the superintendent of schools to apply to the commissioner of administrative services and to accept or reject a grant for the reimbursement of the costs associated with the installation of the completed air conditioning project that included the dimmer room, head, end room, and locker rooms at Ram High School. Mike, Jerome, is there a second? Heather, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, discussion, will have a voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion also carries. All right, the strategic plan update, eleven point two. Um, if I could, just let me just throw one, one point out. It's, uh, I confess to being a new board chair, so bear with me, there are lessons to be learned in this. Uh, and I'm grateful to my vice chair for bringing requirements to my attention that honestly I wasn't tracking. Uh, and it is a policy item, so I, I appreciate the, the coaching. Uh, strategic plan that we originally, um, that, that is enforced today, it's on, it's, it's available through the Ram website, there's a link to it. It was originally developed in twenty-seventeen, is that right? Twenty-seventeen? 2017, they're generally supposed to be three-year plans, uh, to keep them relevant, and, uh, but this three-year plan's end and the development of what would have been the next three-year plan landed smack dab in the middle of the, uh, COVID disruption. And so, at that point, the, my, to my understanding, the board, uh, adopted this plan to extend out five years to, to the five-year mark, uh, because it was probably not practical at that point, given the uncertainties, to really kind of try to develop any sort of meaningful new plan at that point. Uh, given, given those circumstances, we were sort of operating under an extended plan that obviously has, uh, some failings with, because it, it sort of addresses a time when we didn't have COVID, and although I can't ever remember what that was like, to be honest with you. It's, uh, it's a reality now, and so, uh, at this point, it, but it is a requirement for us to review that plan, and I don't wanna skip over that requirement as a board policy item. Uh, and that's why I asked Colin to actually bring this up. And so, I, I think it's important to discuss, you know, kind of the current, uh, plan as it stands, but also understand that we're in a situation where we're actively, and Colin is leading and charging this, as it's his responsibility to, uh, to develop the next, uh, strategic plan. Thanks.
So, so thank you. So, yeah, you know, I, I wanted to focus my update really more, more on where we are with, um, the next steps in developing the, the revised strategic plan or the updated strategic plan. There's, you know, it's, there's a five-year history with the strategic plan that had been developed by, uh, two superintendents ago. Certainly, there was a tremendous amount of work that was done by the staff and the administration. Um, you know, there was a lot of work around skills and dispositions that were, um, that, that were critically important work, because it helps build a foundation for what we're looking for of Ram graduates. But really, I wanted to focus on kind of where we are right now with regards to, um, the development of a, of a, of a new strategic plan, because that's really the process that we're about, we're, we're getting ready to embark upon. Basically, uh, what I've been doing in regards to, uh, updating or revising the, or creating a new strategic plan is engaging in conversations with various, uh, organizations and individuals who do strategic plan development. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a heavy lift, there's a lot of work that goes behind, uh, the development of a strategic plan and to, to, to ensure that it is comprehensive and encompasses all of the things that the district needs. Um, I, I've been in communication with organizations such as Partners for Educational Leadership to discuss their strategic planning process. I've been in touch with, um, a, a gentleman from, at Advance, which is a different res, there are different ress do different things, and a gentleman named Jonathan Hospital, who's known across the state as, as a strategic planner. Um, I've also engaged with EastCon, I know Eric has had to, had to leave, but EastCon is another organization that, um, does the strategic planning process. And where I am right now is trying to work with them and identify the organization that we will, uh, partner with and move forward with, with developing a strategic plan. And I would anticipate that that's gonna be, um, something that gets narrowed down and worked through within the next, uh, month or so. Um, and then I would, uh, engage with the board, engage with community members, engage with staff, engage with administration, engage with parents, and with students to really go ahead and start the, uh, strategic planning process. So, that's, that's the strategic plan that, uh, update that I have for you, and I can certainly entertain any questions that people may have.
Alright, hearing none, move on to new business. Item 12.1, policies, second reading. Just wanna ask before we dive into this, I think if I'm correct, second readings are, sorry?
Second.
Second readings, uh, drive a potential motion at the end? Okay, so, I, I told me I wasn't listening. Okay, so, second reading for item 12.1A, uh, policy number 5, uh, 5450, sexual harassment students. Um, you wanna kind of dig through that?
Yeah, I could give a quick synopsis. So, board members may recall, this is, uh, this came forward as a first read over the last meeting. This is the, um, the, the Title IX policy. This is one that, um, when I came into the position and into the district, I, I quickly discovered that this was out of date. Um, I will tell you that the policy as it is written is not how we would follow a, a, a sexual harassment complaint, because of the fact that we're required by law to follow legislative, uh, action as opposed to outdated policy. Um, so, this, the, the policy that we have has been, um, really, i- is following the draft model policy by shipping a good one, and, uh, I would recommend that the board adopt it as presented.
Just to be clear, that is the, the new version that we're voting on, or potentially voting on now, is reflective of the, the state requirements?
Correct, the new legislation, correct.
Okay, uh, do we need to model these individually?
Yes.
Alright, so, uh, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to, for the board to, um, adopt policy number 5450, sexual harassment students, for title enclosure 12.1A, uh, 12.1A. Joe? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Any, any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. Moving on to 12.1B, uh, 5,000 series, the improving the completion rates of the FAFSA, the newly acquired policy, which is representative of enclosure 12.1B. Wanna talk a little bit about that before?
Sure, absolutely. So, the FAFSA is the, um, is the, uh, free application for federal student aid. It's something that, um, this is a new policy that is required per new legislation. It currently doesn't exist in our policy book. Um, it is something that was reviewed by the high school administration, high school guidance counselors, um, to make sure that it was, uh, the language that we're presenting as far as the policy is something that aligns with the work that we're doing. Uh, and again, I would recommend that, that it be accepted as presented.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the, uh, item 12.1B, 5,000 series, improving the completion rates of FAFSA, uh, the newly required policy, which is representative of enclosure 12.1B. Mike? Moves. Heather seconds. Is there any discussion?
I have some quick questions. The policy does not exist in prior.
Correct.
I, I thought it was excellent.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a voice vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, 12.1B, that motion will carry. Uh, moving on to 12.1C, 6,000 series, the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. It's a newly, new required policy, can, uh, replace current policy 6155, which is representative of enclosure 12.1C.
Yeah, and, and, and just to be clear, we, we would really just assign this one to be 6155, just for clarification's sake. So, this is, so this is, um, for lack of a better term, this is a hybrid policy. And what I mean by that is, there was a, there was a policy that was in existence in our, in our policy handbook, 6155, that talked about, uh, and, and it highlighted, um, how gifted and talented services were provided to students in Region 8. And, uh, essentially, um, just, just to remind board members, I know I talked about this last time, we are, we are required to have a, a process that identifies students that are gifted and talented, but by law, we're not required to provide any services if students are identified as gifted and talented. We are very fortunate here in this district that we have programs in place, we have the, um, inquiry team at the middle school, we have advanced placement opportunities for students who are at the middle school to take world language, high school level, uh, math. We even have situations where we have middle school students who will, uh, venture up to the high school from time to time and take classes at the high school level, um, if they have the aptitude for a certain content area. At the high school level, we have advanced placement classes, we have honors classes, we have ECD classes, so there's a lot of opportunities for advanced placement classes, um, for students who have a proclivity towards a certain content area. And what we've done is, the, the, the beginning of the new policy 65, 6155, is newly required language. And then what we did was, we, we have at the end of the policy where it says provision of services, it talks about the fact that the provision of services for gifted and talented students by the board is discretionary, which is true, that's an accurate representation of things. And we basically just say that middle school and high school students identified as gifted and talented shall be provided with educational programs at an appropriate level within the scope of the district's program studies. And I really think that's an accurate representation of what we do. It's not all, but I will also say that we're always seeking opportunities to make sure that we're, we're challenging students at appropriate levels.
I'll entertain a motion, uh, for item 12.1C, 6,000 series, uh, to be identified as 6155, uh, the adoption of the equitable identification of gifted and talented students, uh, the newly required policy, enclosure 12.1C.
I, um, clarify, I threw me the order, I, I did want to briefly discuss that one, did you give it?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any problem with discussing it, I was only gonna just get the motion on the floor and then open it up for discussion.
Yeah, it, it's just, it's, um, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, so that's the proper way to do it right now, that's fine.
Yeah, well, absolutely, I can absolutely have a discussion about it, I just wanna, in there, we'll, we'll hold off on voting until everyone has an opportunity to weigh in if they need to.
Okay.
Alright, is there, is there a motion? Mike, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. This time, I'll open up this motion to, uh, discussion.
Yeah, so I have, um, I, I, a, a question that I did more than, than anything. Um, I, um, after our last board meeting, I did a little dinner, and I wrote a few notes, and then I, I thought about it some more, and I guess, uh, um, I think I can be answered, but I just wanna ask the superintendent if he and his, um, administrative team are confident or feel, or, um, are, are comfortable with, with having it now that, um, they, they can provide what is, what is needed and appropriate through, whatever that might be, AP classes or extra world languages, or, um, so Superintendent McNamara, if you could, if you could just answer that, because I kind of came back in a start of last very close up to 8,000, we thought it, so I just wanted to take your view if that's okay?
Uh, yes, I'm confident in that.
Okay. Okay, so I, 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 I then, and I initially, um, had, had a few questions, which I had, um, expressed at the, at the last, um, meeting, and they weren't any, they weren't doubts, they were just questions, but I think, um, that the flexibility is there as long as we are, as, as we always are committed to that kind of, um, education. So, I don't have any further, um, questions or discussion, I don't know if anyone else does.
Moving on to the rest of the floor, any other questions? Discussion? Nope. Alright, hearing none, then, uh, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion also carries. Brings aside item 12.2, the financials. Turn it over to Colin and Heather.
Alright, so for 12.2A is the expenditure and revenue report as of October 31st, 2022. I'm projecting a net favorable position of $250,595. This is a approximate $12,916 less than I reported, um, in the previous month.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The, uh, so the net favorable position is $250,595, and it's $12,916 less than last, last month.
Thank you.
Um, so as I reported last month, October 1st is the deadline for reporting, um, official enrollments to the state of Connecticut. We are starting to receive some of the magnet and agri-science school invoices. We haven't received all of them, but the ones that we have received are being, um, processed for payment, and I'll have more information in next month's meeting. The pupil services department is closely monitoring their expenditures and ensuring, um, that they adjust for any changes, um, with their students, um, IEPs that, um, get processed along the way of the month. The capital improvement fund is currently focusing on the HVAC project, which has been finalized, and $20,200 is available at the end of that project. That's good news. The retention pond survey was completed the week of November 7th. The results of that, um, survey are being shared with the engineering firm, and the construction documents are being developed based off that survey. The irrigation well replacement has the approval of the health department, and as of the date of this memo, is currently awaiting approval of, from planning and zoning to approval location of, of the site. Update, the site has been approved, and they actually had a backup site approved, just in case. Capital non-recurring fund, unfortunately, at the time of writing this memo, there's still no update on getting that closed out, and unfortunately, there still is no update as of today. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time the board may have. Thank you. Okay, so 12.2B, um, is the food service monthly sales and expenditure reports. Um, so, we've had a little bit of confusion with the state of Connecticut in providing us some guidance, but I'll get into that in a minute. Um, so the report that is attached, or as part of the packet, is, shows the, as the income statement, and it shows that we're currently running at a loss of $30,737.47. Um, at the time of writing this memo, we were awaiting the supply chain grant, um, the second allocation of it, which we just received today, which is about $25,000. We're shy of $25,000, but not too shabby. Um, we also had, um, received or, or are utilizing the smart funds, so we had about $182,000 worth of allocation in smart funds. The smart funds are the funds that were provided to each district that wanted them to continue the free meals for breakfast and lunch for students. Um, so today, we spent about 93, well, not today, I'm sorry, yes, of October 31st, we spent $93,259.73. So, this is where we get to the confusion part. So, originally, the state of Connecticut said smart funds need to be utilized for providing free meals to our students. And so, everybody was set to provide free meals to students. Unfortunately, they didn't divulge what would happen in a partial month. So, the next set of guidance was that we can't do partial month. We can only do a full month of meals, and the rest of the money can be used for equipment purchases. As of the date of this memo, that now has been redacted. And so now, we have to spend the money on free meals, we still cannot do a partial month. So now, there's a question for guidance to the Board of Education on how, well, we can do a partial month, but we have to find the rest of it. Let me read the language, please. Alright, so I copied and pasted the language that was provided to us. So, based, because all smart funds must be used to support meals free of charge for students, districts have three options. The school food authority may continue to offer meals free of charge to students with their remaining smart fund balance for a partial month. And if the SFA, which is the district, has excess funds more than three months' operating cost, the SFA may use excess funds from the SFA's nonprofit food service account or other allowable funds, donations, general fund, et cetera, to continue meals free of charge for students for the remainder of the month. The school food authority, or number two option, number two. The school food authority may continue to offer meals free of charge to students with their remaining smart fund balance for a partial month, and eat free meals on the day after the smart funds run, run out. So, in our case, I'm estimating that our smart funds would run out on January 10th. So, on January 11th, we'd have to, so in that case, you are correct. On January 11th, we would have to, um, start charging for meals. And then number three, is if the SFA determines that they do not wish to use the remaining smart fund balance, these funds will be forfeited. So, that is the discussion that we would like to open up to the board. Um, we brought this to the finance subcommittee, and, um, the chairperson of the finance subcommittee wanted to know how much it would cost to, um, feed to the, uh, to June 30th, their last day of school. So, based on the calculations, um, through, this was done on November 15th. It's two thousand, two hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty three cents per day. And again, these are estimates based on the number of meals that we serve. Um, we are gonna have enough to get us through January tenth of twenty twenty three. And so that'll leave ninety nine days left for the school year after January tenth. So we would be looking at a total of two hundred and twenty three thousand and forty seven cents. Um, to, to finish out the school year for the students to have free, reduce, our free meals, um, till, till we get out of school. If we stopped feeding students on December thirty first, I'm sorry, so for, for January tenth, we would have thirteen thousand, two hundred and six dollars and fifteen cents that would be exhausted as of January tenth. If we wanted to continue to the end of January or January thirty first, the district would have to pay in thirty one thousand, eight hundred and forty four dollars and forty, forty eight cents.
Why don't we, why don't we open the subcommittee's discussion? I, I actually had the, uh, the benefit of being able to participate with the, uh, finance committee inside. I heard their discussion, I think some of the rest of the board that was not, that is not, uh, one of the standing board members for the, uh, subcommittee probably have not read these numbers nor had an opportunity to weigh in on that discussion, so I think, um, you know, probably first was most relevant, maybe asking the finance committee chair to weigh in and, and maybe just provide input based on that discussion first. Dr. Benson Clark, could you do that for us, please?
Um, yeah, sure. Um, just, just for the board's information and knowledge, um, our business manager and superintendent, um, followed everything that they needed to, including the, um, kind of what felt like change guidance on, on business funding. I did pose the question, no, we probably could not do it, but asking what would it cost for us if we were to self-fund and to provide meals for the, um, for the entire school year, so that I certainly appreciate that our business manager, um, took the time to do that. And as, as we heard, it's a pretty substantial cost. Um, and, and my thought, everyone, was that, that perhaps not so much for this year, but maybe more for next year to get information, um, from families in a, in a meaningful way. If, um, you know, if, if assistance with food would, would be helpful to them. We know that there are these appropriate channels or typical channels, I should say, of filling out this state, um, paperwork. We also understand that, that it's, um, confidential, um, but we, I, I, I think I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, and, and the committee, I, we all care that our, our committee is, um, even love that and, and, and just all of that. So I did, I did add, Eva, to do this kind of extra, um, you know, good amount of work to, um, determine that amount of money. It, it is, it is substantial, so I, I appreciate that she did that. Does, does that make it, um, your chairman, Horace?
Yeah, that was perfect, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
So I'll just, just to, you know, pile on, so as, as part of the discussion, you know, it's not ideal to run out of funds in the middle of an odd, an odd period, um, only because it's something that's new, it's something that we're gonna have to communicate definitively to the, to the, uh, community. We don't, certainly don't want to have a circumstance where a student shows up and, you know, frankly, it'll be like it, that, uh, I probably forgot to give him a bunch of money that day or, or to repopulate his account. Um, I think the thing that, um, I'm very confident is that I, we've had this discussion in the past, uh, certainly over some of the COVID period to ensure that the food security with, um, students, not only making sure that a student got something to eat, but that there was no stigma attached with, uh, the need to, uh, get something to eat with, in a circumstance where they weren't necessarily, uh, had money in their account or whatever. I'm, I'm very confident based on the explanation of the procedures and the process that goes on. It's transparent to anybody that might be in the close proximity and, uh, at that point, really the only two people that are aware of the circumstances of how things get paid for is the person at the register and the student that actually brings the lunch up and there's a, there's an opportunity to make sure that that student gets some, uh, gets fed. So that being the case, I think, you know, Dr. Benson Clark's point was, you know, what does it really cost? And so I appreciate Eva bringing those, those figures to us. It certainly didn't hurt to ask the question, but at this point, um, and this is just my own personal input, uh, as an individual and a board member, but at two thousand dollars a day with ninety nine days left in the year, I certainly don't think that there's an opportunity for us to self-fund two hundred and twenty three K. And I think even to, to discuss the January, carrying it from January eleventh through January thirty first, uh, thirty one thousand of unfunded or unbudgeted, uh, certainly in a circumstance where our current net favorable position is, uh, while, while it's, you know, positive, you know, that's not something that I think we can rely on, given that it's not, this is not programmed in the budget. So I think the only thing, the only other thing that did come out of that meeting that I thought was appropriate was there was some discussion about whether or not to end this funding early as in, you know, we go away for our December break, we communicate to the students that, you know, the funding ends when the, when the school break, uh, starts and then we start with the, when the break comes back. Look, I, again, this is my individual board member perspective on this, but I, while I'm completely sensitive to the idea that it's, it's not necessarily ideal to have to communicate it that way, if I were to take a step back and manage this in my own household, I would certainly not give back any day's worth of any funding for groceries in my own home. So I'm not sure that I feel confident in committing, in recommending to the board that, that, um, I'm, I'm not confident in recommending to the board that we stuff, that we turn back what, what amounts to what, eight or nine days even worth of funding? Six school days, because I think, you know, in, there are households in, in our region that, that those six days matter. And so I would, I, I can't think of a good reason why we would, why we would give money back, frankly. So at that point, I'll certainly open it up to the board for any other discussion, please. Yes, please.
Um, I guess my question is, if we end it, um, thirty first and come back to school, can we still use those smart funds for the students who are getting reduced lunch for the full month? It's all or nothing?
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we're budgeted to manage the...
So, okay, so let me put this out, so if the paper application or the direct certification process, family has completed that, they have funding, so they're, they're getting a reduced rate. So you would create, if you fill out the application to qualify for, you'd get a reduced rate and you get that dollar, whether it's forty cents, ninety cents, or a hundred. Um, they can give you up to that dollar, but you've not had any more money for that. And the smart funds, you have to use it for all students and just can't, verbally identify.
So it's actually two separate parts. But it does exist, that money exists, is that, is that internally funded or is that state, that state fund directly? Any other questions for discussion?
Yeah. I, I really don't want to give any money back, at the same time I recognize that our ability to self-fund any, any balances that exist is probably not practical, so uh, I would, I would support you go through the end of the calendar year, end of December. That would be the end of the last full month of funding that was available, because if I heard correctly, January was a partial, correct? And so the only thing that we would give back would be the remainder thirteen K. Alright, thank you.
Anyone else?
Agree with you.
Can, can Eva, um, I, I, I felt like you had a recommendation, kind of the other, the other evening, um, could you, could you share what you think would be most advisable to do?
So personally, I would love to see us feed the children, but unfortunately, I know that's not feasible, so the cleanest route is to end it on December thirty first and, and to advise the families that as of January, um, third, when they return back to school, that payments would be accepted and would need to be, um, uploaded into their, uh, My School Bus account so that their children can eat. Or, um, they would have to, um, provide meals for their children and/or, um, highly recommended that they fill out the applications so that they can qualify to see if they qualify for free or reduced lunch.
Eva, can you please, I know I've heard this more than anybody and should be ridiculously clear, however, I'd like to hear it again. Could you, um, share this scenario where we would not return a penny or would use no money, uh, to spend every possible dollar we can? What, what would, what would that look like exactly?
That, that would look like the children could eat until January tenth. On January eleventh, um, payments and/or brown bagging their lunches would have to come back on January eleventh. That's option two.
And that would be in the middle of the week.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
Um, am I misunderstanding two? Item two allows us to spend to the middle of the month? We use up all the funds and we're not under any obligation to fund?
It's not really the middle of the month, it's January, that, for us.
So I would use, I, I mean, I have a few, I don't have any money on the table.
I have the, both of you.
Okay.
I, I don't wanna leave, leave any money on the table, um, at all and, and, you know, it just might give people time after the holidays, I don't know, it's so busy. Family are in from out of state, people are sick, just to really get themselves even more together, more noticed and, um, and everything. I, I, I would prefer to use every penny possible.
I would think that the alternative in the communication dilemma on this is that if we have a Monday, Tuesday and a Wednesday, am I correct that Wednesday is the tenth, is that right? Wednesday is the, I'm sorry, the, the tenth, okay, so the tenth is a Tuesday. So that gives us an opportunity for the second through the sixth and then again on the ninth, on Monday, the opportunity to communicate in the method that we communicate to the students, different mediums. Mike doesn't listen to me, but I'm certainly, I'm certain you guys do all the things that you're supposed to do. Um, to communicate that, that, you know, come tenth, there's a lot of opportunities that lead up to that and as we're getting everybody in a much, frankly, you better notice that if you told me to remember something on, when do we break, December twenty fourth, that you, I remember on the third or second when you go back. I, I don't know, I, I think, I just think there's a, there's an opposing view to that communication level that we could probably, that, that I think warrants considering and not giving back that money. So I don't, I don't like that either.
We certainly would come up with a communication strategy to make sure that people are aware of how to buy the free reduced lunch as well as here's the day where free lunches run out, that would be something that would be communicated, uh, frequently and, uh...
You just answered the question I was gonna ask, because free reduced lunches is going back to the way it used to be pre-COVID. But people haven't had to worry about that. So immediately as the time will start communicating, I would assume, or as soon as we can get that message cleared, we can prepare. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other further discussion or questions? Need a motion?
I would make a motion to accept, um, option two, which is the one that runs through February ten, and I think it's, um...
I second that.
Okay, that Eric is the, uh, motion and Dr. Benson Clark is the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or absences? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, that was, uh, for discussion, I appreciate that.
Okay, so just two more quick ones, so twelve point two C is your student activity reports, um, the reports as of October thirty first, twenty twenty two, balance to the bank accounts, are there any questions on the, what information you had in your packet on student activity? So hearing none, this is, um, twelve point two D is, uh, the second month that we're recording on the short-term investment fund. And as of October thirty first, twenty twenty two, we had a dividend reinvested of eight hundred and seventy three dollars and fifty four cents. Are there any questions on the short-term investment fund?
Quick question.
What is that actual return percentage?
I'm trying to calculate it as I can. My apologies, next month I will add that in the memo. Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to committee reports. Uh, where are we, time log, is here, uh? Eighty, eighty fifteen, alright, so we're, 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 so what I would like to do is go through the committee reports. Um, so at this point, why don't we kind of cover policies, quite a bit of policy stuff, but I'll defer to the policy committee if there's anything that we need to discuss or any updates that they have for us. Alright, hearing none, move on to finance, we've also, we've talked about finance a little bit as far as the lunch is concerned. Any finance, uh, update or report? Okay, move on to facilities.
You don't have anything you can add, you are, uh, still anticipating the completion of the older crews. Successful, we prepared well, we will have the discussions on priorities of this group.
I will be able to provide the board that by weekly updates, some information about the well, timeline and location which has been approved.
Perfect, good news. Okay. Uh, program, is there any in the program?
No, we didn't, we did not meet this month.
Okay, thank you. Uh, negotiations?
Yeah, um, so negotiations, um, that, and, um, we are, we are in progress. We are, we are going forward, so, um, we hope to have something to bring to the next board meeting, Superintendent McNamara, is that correct?
Correct, we have a tentative agreement with the administrative group and we will be able to come to the board, uh, with that TA for ratification at the next meeting.
We, we feel good about that, two fingers crossed.
Great. Uh, how about Eastcon?
Eastcon's meeting is tomorrow, the end of four meetings.
Okay, thank you for, is, is Eastcon rep still here? Thank you, okay. Uh, and then Cave?
Cave, um, the bid is okay, I'd just like, um, for us to maybe report at the next meeting because we just came off of a weekend at Cave of, of Friday and Saturday. It's pretty, was pretty tiring, but good, so, uh, you know, perhaps Mary Sue and, um, Superintendent McNamara and I could just give a brief, brief update, not formal, but at that meeting, would that be acceptable?
Chairman Horace?
I'm sorry, I, I apologize, if you could re, restate your question?
I, 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 we just came off of a long cave weekend of Friday and Saturday. So I would like, um, the gift of time for us to process the, 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 and present, um, those of us who attended some of the big, uh, uh, great meetings at our next board meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, guys, did I miss anything as far as committee reports? Okay, item fourteen turns us to public comment. Uh, if you'll bear with me, I agreed our statement again, just to be clear. Hebron, Andover, Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings are welcome. The public comments segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. At this point, I'll open it up again to those present for public comment? Please. Yes, you can go over here, thank you. Oh, sorry. Yes?
Hello? Oh, there we go. Uh, good evening, uh, Ethan Spinelli, twenty-two Riverdale Road, Marlboro. Um, I also am president of the REA, if you're not, if you're not familiar, I am voted by the faculty members to speak on their behalf, um, in all matters. And today was an emotional day. And today was an emotional day. I will not lie for teachers. We are struggling emotionally. Uh, we are stressed. And I said something to the superintendent when we talked last night, and I, I do appreciate him reaching out to teachers and asking for opinions on what's going on in school. But I did say to him, um, that not saying something, in my opinion, is saying something. So I did not plan on making comments tonight, but I felt that by not saying something, that also sends a message. The climate at Ram is, is, is struggling. Teachers, uh, need some help. Um, I get concerned and a little bit defensive, um, when maybe there are some implications that part of the difficulty that Ram are what teachers are doing or not doing in the classroom. And, and that makes me a little bit nervous. I can tell you there is no more inclusive or welcoming or open faculty than the ones that you have here working for you. They work endlessly each day to make sure every student feels supported and welcome. Um, and that is part of their, their, their concern with how the unfortunate incidents might be played out. I, I'll be honest, I waited to make my comment until the, to the meeting left. I think this is important to discuss on, on a personal level, and I know how things can be sensationalized, but I do not want that to happen. Um, but the climate is a reflection of the culture of the school. Teachers do not make the climate of the school. Climate, and I'll get on my metership soapbox for a second, climate comes from culture. Culture is created by metership. All of you on stage have a responsibility to make sure the culture that you want at Ram is communicated with the building administrators so that they can put that culture in practice into play among the faculty. Climate is a reflection of culture. And if climate is struggling at Ram among teachers, then that means our culture is struggling at Ram. I think it's fantastic that we brought in a lot of experts tonight or, or people from outside the community and within the community and parents that have spoke tonight about the concerns that they have. But I'm disheartened because this district has a hundred and forty experts on hand, ready to discuss what students need in the classroom. A hundred and forty. We have experts in math, science, student, I, I've all touched, we, all content areas. We have experts in psychology. We have experts in social work. We have experts in student counseling. And so I get very disheartened when teachers are dismissed as just teachers. We are experts. We know what this community needs. We listen to the students every day. Every day. We are the experts. And we want to work in collaboration with experts in our community and outside to make what happened this weekend now happen again. I will also add, if I'm allowed, that if I told you the things that teachers hear and have to endure every day from students in terms of rude and disrespectful, disrespectful language, you would blush. You would absolutely be blown away by the profanity that teachers hear in their classroom. Now, I'm not going to tell you this guy's fault. I'm, I'm a pretty rational person. This is a great school. It still is, and I believe it always will be. But teachers hear these things every day in their classroom and it wears on them. It grates on them. We're into November, hardly the beginning of the school year, and teachers are feeling it and they're upset. Well, make it blush even more. There's probably some of the responses that we get from building administrators when we bring it to their attention. And I respect every single one of them, and they're doing their job to the best of their ability, as we all are. And I believe that. Obviously, do, we are all doing our best, but it is not enough. No teacher should be told in any kind of profanity where to go or what to do. It should not happen. But we accept it here. Make no, make no mistake, we accept it. And the teachers are supposed to take it back to the classroom and carry on with their day, and it is not fair. It's absolutely not fair. So I'm asking for your help. Maybe have a conversation about the culture that we want to reestablish at Ram in light of these incidences and move forward to help create a better climate among the teachers, which in the end will equate to a better climate among our students. And we know that. We absolutely know that for sure. If I could just extend my time a little bit longer, something else regarding this talking to me as the representative of the faculty. We have four teachers resigning tonight. When in the last time in the history of Ram have we ever seen four resignations out of one? Not my twenty years. And what made me a little bit upset is that here at Ram, we do have a unique tradition where the board approves resignations. I don't believe that happens in many of the districts, to be honest with you, but I think it's a good practice. But when it comes time for discussion, there's nothing. There should be discussion why four teachers are resigning at one time. There should be serious discussion at least in executive session. At least. Teachers resigning and they have no other job. It's not like they're leaving to go to another school. They just find that they cannot work here any longer and they're just leaving. That should be a concern. What's even more concerning is that two of those teachers are teachers of color. And nothing sends a message to other teachers of color that we want to come to Ram than knowing other teachers of color aren't giving them. That is a problem. And so I ask the board to ask yourselves some tough questions. Let's work with our building administrators. Let's not put teachers in the way of profanity, unacceptable behavior with just the response of that, there's nothing we can do about it. Our administrators support us. There's no doubt about it. Absolutely no doubt. They support us. You know that. But nobody, not, not, not members of the board, not teachers, not building administrators, should be taught to the way that we are on any given day. Any given day. It should not happen. So let's hit reset button. Let's talk about the culture that we want to put back in place at Ram that supports all of our families, all of them, all of them, and what happened this weekend, or the last week rather. And let's reset the climate at Ram so that teachers are more successful in the classroom, students can learn, students feel welcome, and that teachers aren't going home upset every day looking for other jobs outside of education. Thank you. I know I went over time. I apologize. I do appreciate it, though. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Last one line. Is there anyone online joining us at a hybrid that, uh, would like to share a public comment? Eric, reading in. No? Okay. Thank you. Which brings us to item fifteen, informational items, uh, calendar of events, county, any of you share regarding item fifteen? Any questions regarding any of the items, calendar, both in middle school and high school, as well as the, uh, disciplinary report? At this point, uh, just before we, I, ask about this motion, I, I need to practice, just to cover practical matter. What's the most efficient way to manage the, uh, sound and recording and all that in going from this meeting to that meeting and then back to this meeting? Are we set up that do book to, to do what we need? Okay, and then bring it back? Right. Okay, Jack, I need you to tell me what's, you can, is that, is that, is that a difficult thing? Okay, that's what we'll do. I don't want to change, right? Absolutely. Okay. So at this point, um, I would like to entertain a motion to move to, uh, an executive session for the purposes of discussing attorney-client privilege, communication related to the speech in public forum matters in schools, and further, uh, move to invite Superintendent Colin McNamara and Attorney Jessica Ritter into the executive session. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
One second, Nick.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Uh, is there any discussion about that motion? Hearing none, uh, one for voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Um, where is the link?
I'll make sure that we, we shoot the link back out here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, that motion carries and we are in the executive session. Just for the public's notice, we will move to the executive session. Once that's complete, come back here for the adjournment, so.